I'll call and read the order to the City Council, Officer, with a brief.
All rise. On Thursday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the meeting of the Shelbyville City Council's study session is about to commence. Please be seated and silence all cell phones and noise-making devices. We ask that if you have any business to conduct phone this meeting, to do so within five minutes and depart from the building forthward.
Thank you, sir. We'll ask Brother Dan Ashy of the First Christian Church to offer our invitations tonight.
Pray with me if you would. Father, we thank you for creating us. Father, you've made each and every one of us special to you. You're a God that has loved all people. You always have and you always will. God, we ask your blessing tonight. I ask that you might give our city leaders your wisdom, help them to have discernment and good judgment. Father, there are many times a lot of good options. Help them always to choose the best option for our city. We thank you for the unity that brings our people together tonight. Father, we live in a divided land, and we pray that somehow, somehow the spirit that you have put in your people, Father, would prevail in our nation, and we might be a mighty nation, a strong nation. Father, while we pray for our council here tonight, we also pray for the men and women who serve in uniform, whether it be in the local police and fire departments, or the, Father, the men and women who serve around the country and around the world protecting our borders. We ask God your wisdom and your judgment, and we ask God in the very blessed name of Jesus, our heavenly Savior, amen.
Please join in the praise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Lisa, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Christie?
Present.
Councilmember Ewing?
Present.
Councilmember Seldhouse?
Present.
Councilmember Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Here.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Here.
You have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you. We will need to amend the agenda by moving the first reading of ordinance C to the bottom of the business items, and I need a motion to amend. Do I have that motion?
You do this ordinance C.
Resurrection City.
Ordinance, first reading ordinance. The reason, the reason that we're asking you to do this is because this is your final budget amendment for the budget year, and there are some things on there that are later in the agenda, so we need you not read that until you, as a council, have voted on those items. So we're asking to move it down to the business items, so it'll be read after the other items. Does that make any sense?
Put it at the bottom of section twelve, right?
Yes.
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 Any questions about that? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, third, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I'll need to adopt the agenda as amended. I'll need a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next, the first item on the agenda tonight is for the presentation of proposals for the purchase of the Spring Street properties. Do we have any order of which one goes first? That would be Glass Hollow, please.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a time limit on presentations? Do we have a time limit on presentations?
Let's, uh, let's set that at five, five minutes, good enough? Does that feel all right?
Yes, sir.
How about with the Grindstone Cowboy, need more time?
We're finding a little bit more time.
Okay. How much time you need? Ten, fifteen minutes?
Ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay. Let's set it for ten minutes, if that's okay. Will that work for everybody? Okay. Jim, you take as much, up to ten minutes, if you need to cut, if needed.
Getting the folks, I just have a few notes of you all seeing our proposal, kind of know what we're doing after, what we're doing at Glass Hollow, Table and Tavern already, but as far as the one oh four South Spring Street properties, we've got businesses ready to go there. We've already done the legwork with Nash, and we've already done the legwork with the closing clothing stores slash marketing tile to go in that property. Like I said, those businesses are ready to go. Nash approached us about the ice cream shop in our current building. We get at some point, these buildings would come up for sale, and wanted to wait as to whether or not we will be able to secure those to go in those, starting going in one oh four South Spring Street. If not, we do have the capacity to put those in our front house, in our front room at Glass Hollow. Now that we have our building permit for Glass Hollow, our opening timeline has solidified to the end of the summer. Hay and Service Company is our contractor, which has been waiting for the manpower of this project, and we're finally here. We're acutely aware of the cost and the time that renovating these historical buildings can entail. In the early two thousands, we bought the Coca-Cola building across the First Community Bank to bring it back to life. And as you all know, we're working on the Knox Spitz Building and the Robinson and Gill Harness Shop to do the same. We're trying to create an amazing bakery downtown in one of those unique experiences for all of our citizens and for the folks that are coming from out of town for the tourism. One point that we feel that the council should take into consideration is the continuity that our group will be able to provide for that entire area of the square. We're paying out of pocket to relocate over a hundred and fifty feet of overhead power lines to run those underground to be able to have a nicer area, a little more aesthetically pleasing over there, and that will consist of overhead power lines and communication lines. We haven't asked the city for any kind of financial support up to this point, but if another restaurant would come in, we would like to see that. It will be two hundred and seventy seats for the Steakhouse and another hundred and ten to hundred and fifty for the Tavern. I don't know what their seating capacity might be, but there's only a hundred and seventy parking spots that the public has available around the square. To support those two-size restaurants, that needs to be a consideration, that to move either some kind of parking structure, or I know there's supposed to be some parking at the Overlook and River Overlook. I do think also, into the parking, is that some of the other businesses around the square should be asked. I mean, Carrot Break has been there for nearly twenty years, and Hope's has been there since nineteen thirty-eight, now that they've recently reopened. There's some other businesses on the square that understand the parking issues that are currently there. That's why we've tailored our hours to be later on in the evenings and more throughout the weekend, so that there aren't any undue hardships on those businesses. Two of those large restaurants going in on the square, it's gonna make it hard for those folks to operate during the breakfast and lunch hours. As you all know, it's pretty busy up there now, as it is. As far as our timeline that we gave in our proposal, we expect to be operational in the one oh four South Spring Street. That would be the Challenger Buildings within about eight months. As soon as we would close on that, if we do get the properties, we would start demolition and get ready to get started on that. We've got our bottle shop that's ready to move and ready to move forward with the ice cream shop. Now, the big one's gonna be the Cow Building. It definitely needs a lot of work. It's basically four walls and some trusses. It needs an entirely new roof system and everything. And the back half is pretty well come down in on itself, so that one's gonna be considerably longer. We're thinking somewhere in the eighteen to twenty-four month range. We bought our property at Glass Hollow in October of twenty twenty-one, and we're not done yet. We're finally starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel, but we're pretty aware of how long this can take and how much money that you can really spend on one of these. We do understand that the council's looking for a brand that anchors the square in Shelbyville, and we feel like it'll be hard for us to find one that's not only gonna carry for that corner of the square, but also create something that can be enjoyed by our citizens and by the tourists that are coming to our area. We've got a phenomenal chef coming onboard at Glass Hollow, and have taken all the right steps to create something that's gonna be truly special for Shelbyville. We want to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity that we can throw our hat and ring to do something special like this.
Thank you.
And y'all will find in your packets the pictures and the drawings and the rain grains and everything, as well as turning the street into a, into a pedestrian walkway with light lights and everything down through there. And I just think it would really help to have those buildings to make it a poetic area over there. So if y'all have any questions, please let us know. As we said in the, in the packet, it's whiskey, horses and history, and I was amazed because it's not really one part of the history of Shelbyville's life and stuff. And we really hope to get these buildings just to help the city. It's a gift from us to the city to be able to do this for y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley. Any questions from the council, to Mr. Bass or Ms. Beasley? Anyone?
I do have a question. It's ice, it's Nash Ice Cream and a bridal shop and for the Kyle Building.
It would be a boutique distillery, so we have talked with Sherry Moore, who is one of the consultants that was with Nair's Cream, and I've also spoken with Rob Pinson, who is the attorney that put all of their distillery operations together. And so we would be gearing more towards a mutual spirit, something that we would blend there and out to do a lot of flavorings. There's a lot of whiskey stuff that's going on in this area, but to give a little bit of differentiation for folks that are coming in, they not only get to hit three great whiskey places, they could hit a really good, small boutique shop right here on our square.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, we'll ask Representative of the Grindstone Cowboy, please, July. Good evening, folks.
Hey.
How are y'all?
You know, if we, if we could have, we'd actually load all of you up on the bus and take you over to Grindstone Cowboy and let you listen to Craig sing. I think it would be a pretty good experience, and he brought his guitar. If you do want to hear the product, not just see the product, we're happy to have him sing for you right here. I'm just gonna run through just a couple of quick things. First and foremost, City Council, Mr. Mayor, thanks for having us, thanks for allowing us to present this out. I'm Matt Davis, and I think most of you know my wife, Beth Davis, and we would be the face of Veco Investments, which would own the buildings and have interest in the business itself, in the three businesses, actually. So I'm just gonna run through a little bit on the finance side and a little bit on kind of ROI, and how we think that we can build this thing out. Craig and Mindy Campbell are gonna spend just a couple of minutes talking a little bit about their theme and their existing business and the success that they, they've had. And then Glenn Dowell and Alan Buchanan are gonna talk about the build-out and the costs, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that go along with that. So I'm just gonna give a little bit more detail about our investors. We will have, we actually formed a partnership called Veco Investments, which I said will own the building itself and the businesses. And we will have, currently we have seven investors who are what we consider accredited investors. A definition of an accredited investor would be at least three hundred thousand dollars a year in income and a million dollars in net worth. So then we are establishing a building credit line and loan with local bank, Traders Bank, to do the build-out. Some of our investors you know. Gary King is one of our investors. We have a local builder who expressed interest and will be investing. Minimum investment would be a hundred thousand dollars, with more to be added underneath. The credit line is gonna be two million dollars for the build-out, and then we will add as needed if we need to do that. So I, I would, I would present it this way, and, and we, we actually, first of all, we'd be more than willing and happy to talk about parking issues. You know, we've had those discussions with our investors, and if there was something that we do, that could do to add or contribute to that, we'd be more than happy to do that. We really feel like diversification is important in the city. You know, the city is growing like a wheel, and we feel like that we could bring something that's a little bit different. A lot of our investors are from outside the community. They, some of them are, some of my employees with my other company, and could give maybe a little bit different perspective of what's going on outside of our community, along with our investors that we have here in the city. Our vision is pretty simple, and I'm gonna ask Craig to come up and talk a little bit about it, but this is a concept that's proven. Has anyone been to Grindstone? Grindstone Cowboy's in Eagleville. They have seven hundred, oh no, I'm sorry, they have a thousand-person population. This couple, less than fifteen months ago, opened up this concept, not a coffee shop, not a bar, it's not a honky-tonk. It's a little bit of everything. It's an experience. They did a million dollars in revenue in the first twelve months with a thirteen percent profit before taxes. We think if they can do that in Eagleville, what can we do here? From a revenue and a tax-based standpoint, and a property value standpoint, we feel like that we're well positioned to be able to diversify the experiences here, but also put ourselves in a position to, to maybe show the city a lot of revenue from a tax-based standpoint as well. So I'm gonna ask Craig to come up for just a second, talk a little bit about their journey and the experience that they've had.
You need to listen to this camera.
How's it going, guys? First of all, thanks to the council and mayor for the time and the opportunity. Yeah, Grindstone was, was a dream of ours several years ago. When I first pitched it to my wife, and she said, no, absolutely not, we're not doing that. But I wouldn't let it go, and I, and I just felt like what I had in my brain as far as what Grindstone Cowboy was gonna be, would work. And so finally, I, I, like I said, I didn't let it go, and I took her to a place where I said, hey, here's what I'm thinking. And she's like, okay, I'm, I'm, I can do it. And we had an idea, we, we had an idea of what Grindstone would be, but we were totally wrong. We were, we were wrong in the best of ways. We had a number picked out that we thought, maybe if we could just hit this number, we'd be fine. We almost quadrupled the amount. People come in all the time, they say, what is Grindstone? What, what is, is it, is it a coffee shop? Yes, and no. Is it a restaurant? Yes, and no. Is it a music venue? Yes, and no. It's, it's a little bit of all of it, and, and it was at, by accident almost. But we, we realized that in about thirty days, and we, when we realized what we had, we put the hammer down. And that's what we've had. We've, we've been super successful. Grindstone is an experience, and I feel like it's something that Shelbyville would, would love to have, and in, like the better term, need. And I think being on the square would be even better. Grindstone is, is, I don't think it's anything that I, I, I couldn't, you, the words can't sell it. It's, it's awesome. It's, when you walk in, and this is what this, this will be here, when you walk in, you'll feel at home. You'll feel like you've been there a thousand times. You'll be comfortable. And when you walk in the doors, the first thing, the very first time, once we say, hey, we're open, you're gonna walk in and you're gonna be like, wow, this is amazing. That's the experience we have at our location in Eagleville, and there's nothing different about the one in Shelbyville. It's just gonna be bigger. And with my experience in the country music world and the music business, I know that the, the attractions that we can put together would, would be incredible for Shelbyville. Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it would be a great thing.
How many of you have?
The only thing I can say is like, people come up to us all the time and say, you know, people come to Nashville. Eagleville is kind of becoming a destination town. I think Shelbyville could become a destination town with everything that's coming here. Nashville's kind of outgrown itself, and people are looking to move out for other activities. They go to Jack Daniels, and they go to Harrington Vineyards, they hit Art's Five, they'll hit this spot, they'll hit Tennessee Downs. They'll head to Uncle Mary's. I just feel like it's a place that it all kind of comes together and builds outside of Nashville. And I think Nashville kind of needs a little relief, and I think Shelbyville is a perfect place within the distance of Nashville to provide that. And we still tap into the music industry, and we love music.
Yeah, okay, there's a more thing, as far, as far as parking is concerned, we got, that, that, I don't care, whoever needs to build, there will be a parking issue, so it's not, maybe whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dowell?
Yes, my name is Glenn Dowell, and I'm the president of Dowell Construction Group in Nashville. This is Alan Buchanan. He's a partner in the business with me and has worked with me for thirteen years. He doesn't look that old, but he's older than he looks. I have an addiction, and it's not to whiskey, it's not to horses, but it's to old buildings. I love old buildings, and whenever I come down this way, I remember thirty-five years ago, maybe forty, my wife and I came down to War Trace and spent the night at the Walking Horse Hotel. It was open as a, kind of like a bed and breakfast at that time. And I was still at War Trace about three or four months ago, and looked at that building and thought, boy, if we could get a hold of that, somebody, it would be great to do something with it. When I've seen these two buildings, I have the same impression, the same visceral response, that it could be turned into something fantastic. How we got involved, our company does a lot of renovations to older buildings, some historic structures. We've done a lot of restaurant hospitality work. We've renovated or built over sixty restaurants in the past seven or eight years, almost all in Nashville proper. None of them are chain restaurants. They're all one-offs, unique kinds of places. We've done projects that vary in cost from two hundred and fifty thousand to we've done one venue that's thirty-two thousand square feet, seven bars, two commercial kitchens, and it was close to fourteen big. We love working on old buildings. We've done work with Metro Parks in Nashville. We've renovated two of the oldest fire halls in Nashville, Fire Hall fourteen and sixteen. One's Holly Street, the other is on Hillsborough, Hillsborough Village. It's, a lot of that is in the proposal that we turned in, just to give you a little, you know, bit of information. I'm gonna give Alan about thirty seconds to talk a little bit about, and then we'll wrap it up.
Guys, time is money in commercial construction in you guys' world, and I think that's why we bring the best experience to the table, to create the tax bases as fast as possible. It means we, we make money. So that's kind of why we got brought in, and I'll turn it over, that's what I tell.
I'll wrap this up. This is not, this is a vision and an experience, but it's a proven vision and experience. We already know that this business can make some money. We already know that the other businesses that, that we put in can make some money. We have the capital, we have the right builders, we have a timeline, and we have to be up and running in twelve to fifteen months in order for this all to work out for us. So we're, we're super excited. We hope you see the excitement. We think we have something here that doesn't compete with what's going on in the square, but really kind of contributes and adds to it. So appreciate your time. We'll be happy to answer any questions any time.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the Grindstone Cowboy? Thank you, each one of you for coming. Some questions? All right, thank you, folks. All right, we'll move on with our agenda. Consent agenda, I'm going to read these items. You having a discussion on any of them, or you just know? All items in this portion of the agenda are considered to be routine and are non-controversial by the council, may be approved by one motion. However, a council member may request that an item be removed for separate consideration. A, approval of city council minutes of the following: study session of April the fourth, twenty twenty-three. B, regular meeting of April the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. B section, accept all monthly reports for the month of April. C section, approval of all accounts payable for the month of April, that's twenty twenty-three, of course. D, approve and authorize the mayor and city attorney to sign the engagement letter with Winnet Associates, T L C, for audit services for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. There is an additional fee of five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to let everyone know that's actually supposed to be thirty-five thousand dollars. It was correct in your staff summary and in the engagement letter. It was just an error, I even when I typed it in on the agenda. So it's a base amount of thirty-five thousand, or amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand.
And the additional fee is still there?
Yes. That's to be, the additional fee is if a single audit is required.
So in the amount of not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, there is an additional fee of five thousand dollars if a single audit is required related to federal grants. E, approve and authorize the mayor and city attorney to sign the engagement letter, an AIA contract for T L M and Associates for the city building program. F, adopt Juneteenth as a City of Shelbyville holiday for employees and update the City of Shelbyville personnel policy to reflect that option. G, authorize the mayor to sign a letter requesting an extension on the site development grant contract timeline from January the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. H, authorize the mayor to sign a letter requesting a one-year extension on the corporate hanger site development grant. I, accept the bid from Southern Monument Corporation, the, uh, LeMona Monument, Tennessee, sold bidder for the Willamette Cemetery Columbia Area Project, I believe is right, in the amount of eighty-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three budgeted amount was one hundred thousand dollars, which will cover this as well as the necessary concrete work. Any questions, only any of that. Authorize a request for proposals for banking and depository services for the city. Do I have a motion to accept all of that on the consent agenda? I'll let you go.
Second.
Do you have a second? Okay. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Councilmember Seldhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay. Public hearings, uh, this is a closed session meeting, right?
Yes, we had a closed.
Okay. And ordinance of the City of Shelbyville, Tennessee, to approve the rezoning of point five-five acre owned by Greg Pearl, newly subdivided parcel, comes, uh, newly subdivided parcel, uh constituting the back portion of the original parcel, which is referenced on Bedford County Tax Map, point-eight-eight, parcel six-point-zero-five on the medium-density residential district, R-three zoning district, to the low-density R-one zoning district, and repealing any ordinance or portion of ordinance in conflict therewith. Any speakers on that? Anyone in the? Okay. An ordinance regulating, the next one is an ordinance regulating the use of engine compression braking devices. Any speakers on that, on this public hearing? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing on those two items and re- reopen the meeting and I'm gonna ask for a consideration of a motion to allow city attorney to read captions only on the ordinances and resolutions. I need a motion on that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor? All business. Counselor?
Yes, sir. The first ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Shelbyville, Tennessee to approve the rezoning of zero-point-five-five plus or minus acres owned by Grant Curl, newly subdivided parcel constituting the back portion of the original parcel, which is referenced on Bedford County Tax Map eighty-eight, parcel six-point-zero-five from the medium-density residential district, that is the R-three zoning district, to the low-density or R-one zoning district, and repealing any ordinance or portion of an ordinance in conflict therewith.
Need a motion on that? Second? Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Your second item is an ordinance regulating the use of engine compression braking devices.
I need a motion on that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Your business?
Your first item on first reading is an ordinance of the City of Shelbyville, Tennessee to approve the rezoning of one-point-six plus or minus acres owned by James Brett Rollins, located on the south side of Madison Street and comprising the northern portion of Bedford County Tax Map ninety, parcel one-hundred-and-thirteen, from the general commercial C-two zoning district to the high-density residential R-four zoning district, and repealing any ordinance or portion of an ordinance in
Molly? Second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Ginger?
Your second ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Shelbyville, Tennessee to approve the rezoning of one-point-six plus or minus acres owned by Sasha LLC, located on the east side of Bethany Lane and referenced on Bedford County Tax Map eighty-nine F, Group G, parcel eighteen from the general commercial C-two zoning district to the high-density residential R-four zoning district, and repealing any ordinance or portion of an ordinance in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Have a motion on that?
I move we accept the unfavorable recommendation of the planning commission and not approve this ordinance.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call, please.
When I'm calling your name, if you are wanting to deny the ordinance and go with the unfavorable recommendation, you'll say yes. Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Motion passes, the ordinance fails.
Thank you. All right, I am C, we move. Uh any amendment to the agenda? Resolutions, uh?
Okay, let me pull your ordinance up real quick. Okay, your first resolution is a resolution to adopt the design standards for the City of Shelbyville.
We've all received that previously. Uh motion to approve? So move. Second? Second. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Ginger, did we discuss that this should be adopted as an ordinance, so we need to change that?
Yes, I had talked to Molly about that some time ago and then during your stay session, I believe you announced to the to the council that we were gonna be passing it twice, which is what an ordinance is. My recommendation is that you all amend this tonight to make certain, it 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 says ordinance, an ordinance to adopt the design standards, and we can change that. Um we probably also need to make certain that we either adopted it into your zoning ordinance or where you adopted it into your municipal code. Uh otherwise, it's really just more guidelines and it won't be um that you just can't enforce it if you don't pass it in an ordinance form.
I'll amend my motion to change it to an ordinance to be adopted rather than a resolution.
Did you amend it to be an ordinance?
Yes.
Do I have a second on that?
He's ready.
Roll call, please, Lisa.
The first roll call will be on amending the resolution to be presented at a second reading as an ordinance with the ordinance language in it. Uh councilmember Ewing? Uh I think yes. Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Now, we vote on as amended, we need a motion to amend it?
I actually have, I'm sorry, I actually have a motion, we're just ready for roll call, there's no more discussion. Okay, okay. Councilmember, let's start with Councilmember Isaacs this time.
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
So on your next month's agenda, that item will be for a public hearing and a second reading.
All right, counselor?
Okay, your second resolution is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Shelbyville, Tennessee authorizing a grant application with the State of Tennessee Department of Agriculture for animal-friendly spay neuter grant.
Do I have a motion on that for application of that grant?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Approved.
Your last resolution is a resolution of the City Council of Shelbyville, Tennessee authorizing an official delegation to the twenty-twenty-three Annual Conference of the Tennessee Municipal League and providing for the attendance and expenditures of that delegation.
Have a motion on that? So move?
Second.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, business items. A, consideration of a motion to approve and authorize a letter to be sent to Bedford County concerning the local option sales tax. Do you have a motion to do that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. B, consideration of a motion to authorize the city manager to engage the outside council concerning the local option sales tax. Do you have a motion on that?
Make that motion.
Yep, the sound system still works.
That's all that matters.
Hang on a minute, let me get a flashlight. Councilmember Ewing made the first.
Do we need an amount of money to go with this?
We need to stop.
Somebody may have a breaker or something, hopefully. Just hang on for just a second on that resolution, okay? Just hang on just a second, that's the B section of your end of the agenda. Don't let it move on light switch or anything like that, right? We sure appreciate our police officers being with us uh at these two council meetings and when the lights go out and things like that. We're always looking, where these guys at? But uh we appreciate them being here and taking care of them from a security standpoint. Hang on just a second, we gotta get it back on.
They usually have a generator that keeps changing, but the the board director went to say
mine had to amend the uh the budget for my phone.
You have a breaker, did they cut the light switch on the wall back there to reset? I think Cody did, I think he did.
I partially, that's why, that's why I was saying.
Partially?
Yeah, partially.
You might need to stand up, take a stretch. Mark, I don't know how you handle that newspaper. Okay, all right. B, let me read that one again. Consideration of a motion to authorize the city manager to engage outside council concerning the local option sales tax.
Make that motion.
Motion on that, please.
Motion. I'll second.
Do you have a motion? Counselor Warren, you can second. Okay, all right. We're ready for a roll call.
Got a question. Question, do we need an amount of money to go with this or anything, or is this under, currently just under the limits of what the city manager is thinking? If we've had a limit? And we should live? Fifty thousand? I think that's what we talked about in study session. I made your motion or I'll make an amendment to it.
Well, I have a question. Do I need to endorse or? Um when will that council be retained or when will we, that bill start going? Or does it make any sense?
And the city manager? Yes, ma'am, it makes absolute sense. And before we do, uh the letter will be signed off and delivered to all the addresses on it. And then to go ahead and prepare for the answer one way or the other and help us traverse this issue, I'd like to go ahead and contact the outside council in a very timely manner.
Good question. So Phil, how she want to amend that to put fifty thousand dollars in there?
Yeah, I'll make that amendment.
She just wants to make that her amendment for a second, agree with it?
Yes.
We're good, all right. All right, let's vote on that first, as amended, fifty thousand dollars as a, as a uh is that the way we're reading it, fifty thousand dollars for that service?
I can't, but not to go over that.
Okay, all right. We've got a first and a second on that, can we have a roll call on that?
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
We don't need to, we need to vote now as it is amended?
Yes.
Okay. I need a
I said that
since the words were amended, it might
the person who did it said, uh, I'm gonna add that to my motion.
So we can go on.
We good?
Yep.
Thank you. C, consideration of a motion to establish a city YouTube channel to authorize the purchase of necessary equipment in the amount of up to thirty thousand dollars from the cable TV pulling. Do I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Approved.
The D under business items, I'm gonna ask our city manager to explain that to us and read that for us, please. You want me to read it and then hand it to you, Scotty? Okay, I'll read it and then Mr. Collins will explain everything. All right, D is a consideration of a motion to accept a proposal for the sale of the two city-owned buildings. Building number one, located at one-hundred South Springs Street, Shelbyville, and formerly known as the Isle Building, and building number two, located at one-oh-four South Springs Street, Shelbyville. Thank you. And formerly known as the Trolinger Building. Did everybody hear what I just read or do I need to read again? Can you hear it? All right. Uh, Mr. Collins? Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation that we defer this decision because number one, it's a monumental decision and it's a very fluid issue. And additional discussions may need to be held. And also the council, I I felt tonight the presentations were somewhat rushed and perhaps the council would be better suited to have a standalone meeting with both entities and thoroughly discuss this and to make the determination on it best for the city of Shelbyville.
Do I have a discussion or a motion on that? Do we? You want a motion to Okay, second?
Second. Now, I wanna, I wanna discuss it, I wanna reiterate again, since this has kind of been one of my pet projects for a long time upon the square. Um I think, as you see tonight and from these proposals we received, it's very energizing and very exciting to see the vision that we really, really have been hoping for years to come to the square. And it's huge. And I think it ought to be a collaboration between all three of these parties, the city, the houses, the Davises, and make sure that this comes and the city really gets what it wants, gets what it wants for the long haul, not just for the short run. As I've said all along, I don't care if we give the buildings away, the impact to the citizens of Shelbyville is gonna be the long-term results coming out of this and it opens our gateway to the river and all that and I want all of us to be on the same page. And I appreciate y'all's presentations and time.
Absolutely.
And I, and I know some of you really wanna get your act together and wanna start building tomorrow, but the city probably is behind the eight ball, a little behind on it, because y'all are ahead of us now to where we need to work out and how we can collaborate together to make both of them very successful if that's what it ultimately winds up, if that's the law.
And I agree with that, um I certainly agree with the city manager Collins in delaying this to do more of a one-on-one, that type of thing on each of the entities and such. We certainly don't want to delay. So um Madam Recorder, maybe does that require that we kind of wrestle up a a meeting in the very near future to have this done?
Yes, yes, we can do that. Um if you all vote to defer this matter, then I'll get with everybody's calendar and we'll try to get something set before our June meeting.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to defer from Mr. Turnbull, Councilmember Turnbull, do we have a second?
Yes, I second you.
I think I had a second.
We, we have another question, how long are we for, for like thirty days just for next month's meeting? And hopefully be able to meet in the meantime instead of their goal?
That would be my
Okay.
I would try to get you set up sometime between now and then, of course, you know, we have budget and everything, but as long as we can work everybody's calendar schedules, we'll get it set up before the June meeting.
Good, uh at at the meeting we had, because we actually had a call with the excellent decision there.
If you wanna make it a regular meeting, a special call meeting, we can do it that way.
I mean, I know both parties are interested in uh after hearing, I wish we had two corners to lie.
It has several things, right?
But uh but I know time is the best for everybody, so if we do that, then maybe then I think we can arrange it that way, I think that would never break up.
We can work on that.
Yeah, thank you.
With no more discussion, then you ready for roll call, wait?
Yes.
So the motion is to defer this decision until a uh special call meeting can be had. Councilmember Foulhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
I repeat the first, thank you.
Thank you. E, consideration of a motion to approve Garber Franklin E, consideration of a motion to approve Darber Franklin, Tennessee, as the provider of professional airport services for the Shelbyville Municipal Airport for the next five years. Do you have a motion to approve them? Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
It's approved.
Thank you. H, consideration of a motion to appropriate ten thousand dollars to Bedford Bill Habitat for Humanity in Shelbyville, Tennessee. Do we have a motion on that?
I made that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
No.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
No.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
No.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
We have a tie vote with three yeses and three noes, I'll ask the mayor to cast his vote.
I will vote no at this time.
Okay, so the motion, um, fails. The item is not passed.
G, a consideration of a motion to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars to the Shelbyville Bedford partnership for fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty-four. Do I have a motion on that? Don't move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christie?
No.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
No.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
No.
Councilmember Hale?
No.
Motion passes. I'm sorry, the motion fails, I'm sorry, the motion fails, four noes, E, yes.
H, consideration of a motion to authorize the closure of South Spring Street from the Public Square to the intersection with Mabrew Street during the period of construction for the Glass House, Table, and Tavern. Do I have a motion on that?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Got a question, how long are we anticipating this, is it ninety days, or is it?
Period of life.
Is it years?
Anybody got an idea?
Sir, uh, with council permission, we'd like it to be left to the discretion of city management, public works, and police department. We'll coordinate with the Glass House and close it as needed, have it open at other times if possible, to protect the safety of the public.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Do we need to amend this, do we need to amend the motion to say that?
Do you need a motion?
Yes. I'll amend the motion that we leave it to the discretion of the city manager and public works director on when they open and close Spring Street during the construction.
And police.
Okay. And what? And police, sorry. And second?
Are you going to second on that?
You need a second?
Second.
Got it, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Now, you need a motion, I mean, we have a motion and a first to approve it, so we just need to vote on it as amended. Okay, agreed. Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Motion passes as amended.
Okay, we've moved ordinance C to this position, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And then I'll ask you to read that, please.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance to amend the adopted budget ordinance as amended in the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee, various funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh-huh. Okay.
Uh, since we just had that other vote, we would just need to remove this blue one on the first page, since it didn't, since it wasn't approved, the habitat.
Okay.
So, we need to remove that from the list.
Okay. All right. Do we need a motion to remove that, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Problem? Okay, I need a motion.
I move, we adopt the ordinance removing the line item for Bedford Habitat.
Okay. All right, do we have a second? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Andrew, you want to state that now we're going to vote on as amended? All right, do we have a motion on that? As amended?
No.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
All right. Purchasing interests. Consideration, A, consideration of a motion to approve issuing purchase orders for fiscal year twenty twenty-four vehicles through statewide contract from Lonnie Cobb Ford prior to July the first, twenty twenty-three, if they become available. Do I have a motion on that? I think that was explained to us by.
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, is there any discussion on that? Lori, or Matt, or somebody can tell you, if you don't remember from the study session.
That's where we would possibly amending, that would go into an amendment.
You know, that on vehicles, we'd like, that we might save twenty percent on, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay, Jan, is that correct? Oh, yes. All right, thank you. All right. So, we have a, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. B, consideration of a motion to let request for proposal, RFP, for the removal of three metal buildings on park property. Do we have a motion on that? I think we'll put soccer fields there if we can later. Do we have a motion on that? Don't move. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Isaac?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Fellhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, the next is ordinance. Uh, we interviewed this afternoon, whether you power board, Shelbyville Power Board, consideration of a nomination by the city council for two seats on the Shelbyville Power Board, permanent for three years. Lisa, will you ask for a nomination, please?
Yes, sir, I will. Uh, we're going to take it one seat at a time, so the first nomination will be for the seat that Cliff Hurst currently has. I will take the nomination as I call your name, please give me one name for that.
Can you, would be better if you just give two names?
This has been the procedure I've been going with for some time.
Like we've done in the last couple of decades.
Think you've adopted that procedure years ago, as how you would vote from this, this office. You put up one for this particular seat.
Can we change it?
I mean, it's, I've always been told by legal that you're supposed to go by your past practices, so I'm raised down a level.
Is there a reason why?
Well, a reason why, for what?
To change it.
And if you want to, but I believe, I actually believe it was the city attorney before me that drew up and adopted, and they adopted at that time, the procedure of how they voted.
I, I think it's just more evenly fair sometimes to be, I, I just think it's more evenly fair, it doesn't matter, it's going to come up the same thing. Not necessarily.
And how we're going to proceed?
I re, my recommendation is you proceed as you always have. If you want to change the procedure afterward, but don't change it tonight.
I'm going to go with the recommendation, city attorney, and call for one nomination, I'm sorry, yes. Councilmember Fellhouse?
For who, for who's seat?
This is for Cliff Hurst's seat.
David Coffey.
Councilmember Ewing?
Mr. Collins.
Councilmember Hale?
Coffey.
Councilmember Christie? Councilmember Isaac?
And David Coffey.
And Councilmember Turnbull?
Collins.
Mr. Coffey got five votes, so Mr. Coffey will take the seat of Mr. Hurst. Now, we'll ask for nominations for Thomas Johnson's seat. And I'll start with Mr. Turnbull this time.
Uh, Thomas Johnson.
Ms. Isaac?
Thomas Johnson.
Councilmember Hale?
Thomas Johnson.
I'm sorry, Mr. Christie, I skipped you. Councilmember Christie?
Thomas Johnson.
Councilmember Ewing?
Thomas Johnson.
And Councilmember Fellhouse?
Thomas Johnson.
So, Mr. Johnson will retain his seat, Mr. Coffey will take the seat of Mr. Hurst. Um, I'll call everybody in the morning, give them this specific time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, announcements. Seat hall will be closed on May twenty-ninth, Memorial Day. Lundy's tracks will be picked up on Tuesday, May the thirtieth, and Hughes's regular, wow. Oh. All right, that was, that was the announcement for closing. Uh, we have a new employee with us tonight, uh, Kate Steer, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, would you stand up, he's our new IT director, is that right, Scott, would you tell us a little bit about Kate?
Okay, what, come to the podium. Come to the podium and please introduce yourself, not only to the council, but to the community. Good evening, I'm, I'm Kate Steer. I come before y'all today as the IT director to bring Shelbyville up to the northern standards that are expected in the twenty twenty-three, that, you know, often so overlooked, because if it's working, why bother? We're going to try to move this in, in a direction that we're good for another fifteen or twenty years, when we major pickups or incidents. I have a little fifteen years' experience in the IT field, seven years with the state, thirty-four years with Sumter County, and two years running my own business. And in that time, I have served everything from help desk, entry level, hey, my computer won't start, to all the way up through project management, security engineering, and networking server and administration.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.